Greetings, everyone, and welcome to Disturbed Oasis. I'm here for a second interview with Mr. James Gordon, who is running for a seat on the Board of Supervisors in Halifax County, Virginia. And we're just going to talk about some more issues. So you can get to know him a little better to make your decision when you hit that voting poll booth and make sure you get out there and vote. The early voting is still going on all week. You don't even have to get out of your car. You can call the Halifax Election Office in Halifax at Mary Bethune, and they'll do curbside for you. You don't have to get out of the car. Just go up and vote. So everybody, let's get these numbers up here and get out here and vote, okay? All right. Great to see you.
Good to see you, too.
I appreciate you taking the time to sit here and interview. So let's have a chat. Now, if anyone did not see the first interview, if you would just introduce yourself, tell us something about yourself.
Sure. My name is James Gordon. I'm running for Board of Supervisors in District Six. I live here on River Road, about five and a half miles outside of South Boston, heading away from Berry Hill. If you haven't been in this area. I've resided in the county now for thirteen, fourteen years. We used to live in Northern Virginia and decided that we were looking for our forever home, and we chose Halifax and moved here.
What were the things that attracted you about Halifax?
It's a beautiful county. We were looking for a property that had some historical value. So we found Springfield. We were very lucky. And it afforded, it was about as far as we could get from Northern Virginia without leaving the Commonwealth, which was a little bit of a negative. But at the time, we had very good internet. The services were very good. We had a great hospital. There was very little downside to moving to this part of the country. So that's one of the things.
Now, do you work full-time? Or I'm kind of going for about having time to attend to the needs of the county.
Well, I used to travel a lot. And the last time I considered running for the Board of Supervisors, that was actually the thing that prohibited me from following through with it, was I was still traveling a lot for my work. I would be required to leave the country at the drop of a hat and go to some horrible place and sort out a problem. I no longer have to do that. So I'm at home full-time now.
Okay, so you have plenty of time to devote to that. So tell me about your motivations for running for Board of Supervisors this time.
I have been less than satisfied with the performance of the Board of Supervisors for a while. I have no personal beef with the current supervisor for my district, but it's very difficult to get hold of. We have a business in the district that has... I don't think any member of the Board of Supervisors had ever turned up and said, "How do we make it easier for you to do business in this county?" Nobody's ever had that conversation. And given the fact that I now have more time on my hands and being mindful of all of the other shenanigans going on in the county and some of the issues that I kept hearing with people who would frequent our business talking about issues in the county, I've always believed that you shouldn't complain about something if you're not prepared to step up and do your part. So given the time and the opportunity, I thought, well, okay, this is a good thing to do. I was actually approached by some other people and asked if I would consider to run for the Board of Supervisors. And that was really the final impetus to do it. So in February of this year, the decision was made, and I made an announcement that I was going to run for the Board of Supervisors.
Is this the first time you've been involved in politics?
No, I was actually going to run for the Board of Supervisors two iterations prior. In fact, the election that saw Larry Giordano removed from our district, I had picked up an election package for that. But that was at a time when I was still traveling too much, and I couldn't follow through with it.
So this is the first time actually doing it?
Yeah, this will be the first time that I actually have to see what votes come back at the ballot box and decide what I'm doing the next day.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so tell me about how your life experience, career experience, and past gives you qualifications to run for an office with a lot of responsibility and leadership.
Well, you told me I wasn't allowed to be too sarcastic. Because if I was going to be sarcastic, I would say, "I've lived here my entire life, and I've never left the county, so therefore I know everything that should be done for the county." It's exactly the opposite of that. I grew up in South Africa. I subsequently immigrated to New Zealand and then came to the United States by a very long and winding road. I've seen a lot of different ways of doing things. My life experience has been rather rich. I have been directly involved in reconstruction projects at a fairly grand scale in numerous places. And I think that the experience that I bring really puts me in a position to be able to look outside of the box and say, "Well, you know, this may be the traditional way of looking at things, but there's other ways of solving this problem." And I think that's probably the thing that is one of the key attributes that I can bring if I am elected to the Board of Supervisors, to be able to say, "Well, you know, maybe we need to look at a different way of doing things." Because if we keep doing what we did, we're going to keep getting worse.
Okay, thank you. So let's see. Let's talk about your district. It's District Six, right?
That's right.
Okay. What specifically are some challenges that need to be addressed within District Six?
District Six itself is, you know, we cover a very big area. It's huge when you look at it. And that's just as a byproduct of a more dispersed community. So we do have some significant economic activity within the district, but it's really localized. But we have what's close in at South Boston, and then we have VIR all the way on the other side of the district. The thing that really plates the district the most, you know, everybody complains about it, the condition of our roads, the lack of internet coverage and cellphone coverage. It's atrocious, but it's worse than it was when we first moved here, and it's not really showing much signs of improvement. Now, broadband has started to get out. You know, broadband has now crossed our boundary. And it still has a way to go to get to everybody else, but they haven't completed the hookups yet. So the infrastructure has started to be built. You know, in our area, cellphone coverage is problematic, and that's also a major issue. So the ability to communicate, the ability to be able to access information is critical for any rural community that wants to continue to thrive. If you don't have those things, you're going to suffer. What is equally important, and unfortunately, when you get to a point where you have everything is a crisis because of mismanagement, it's very different, it's very difficult to be able to differentiate, "Okay, well, which one is going to have to come first?" That's one of the challenges the Board needs to sort out. One of the other crises that we have is the emergency services. We are serviced by Oak Level Fire Department. They rely on volunteers, and volunteerism is dying.
Why?
I don't think that there's... Well, there's a number of issues with it. There's not a lot of incentives. Now, there's a lot of regulation that is being applied. It is a tremendously difficult task for a fire department to get a volunteer certified to be able to do all the jobs that they want them to do. And that involves commitment, time, money, all of the things that we don't necessarily have a lot of. So I think that that's something that we really need to take a serious look at. And one of the issues that I had raised with regards to trying to incentivize people to join as a volunteer firefighter or EMS or something like that was, you know, why don't we look at providing them with a tax break for the purchase of a new vehicle, for example? You know, there may be eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds who may say, "Well, yeah, okay, fine, I'm going to go and volunteer as a firefighter because I don't have to pay tax on my vehicle that I wouldn't have bought otherwise." There's no harm in a transaction like that. Nobody's being outdone by anything.
Right, right.
You've actually incentivized somebody to do something. The person who sells them the vehicle has the increased business activity. He just doesn't pay a tax that we wouldn't have got anyway because he wouldn't have bought the vehicle. But now we've encouraged him to go and participate as a volunteer firefighter. Now, you can set up whatever mechanism you want in order to regulate that by saying, "In order to be eligible for this, you need to, you know, attend so many hours," or whatever that is. We can sort out the detail. But that's just one example of, well, how do we actually incentivize people to do this? Because right now, the message is not getting through, A labor-intensive and expensive way to go is really the only long-term solution. So that may have been something that was a little bit of an obstacle to get over. But the biggest obstacle to get over is we are spread apart. There are miles and miles between users, and that, you know, would be almost cost prohibitive in some cases.
Right. But I'm trying to understand the relationship between the Board of Supervisors and a business, a services business like that, and what the Board can or can't do in order to push that progress forward. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well, I think that it applies to a number of different areas as well. You know, I think the broadband is pretty much, it's on a path and a trajectory to completion. I don't think there's much that can be done at this point in time to get there. And we can't go back and, you know, revisit the issue and start it earlier. It is what it is. We are where we are. But there are other things that I believe the Board of Supervisors should be doing in order to stimulate economic activity. And that covers the entire spectrum. It shouldn't just be communication, which affects my district.
Yeah.
But it should also be, well, what are the other impediments to financial growth and industry growth that we should be looking at? Okay, if I were to be coming here from the outside looking at this, what are the things that would make me go, "Hmm, maybe not." And let's see if we can remove those.
Okay, we'll come back to that. I want to back up to internet again for a minute because that's an issue here, but it doesn't sound like being on or off the Board is going to affect the progress too much because it's already in action. However, I know another district, the Board had a tower built?
Well, that's cellphone communications, so we haven't even addressed that yet.
Okay, let's move to that.
The cellphone communications are horrendous. Now, when we moved here, we had a broadband, oh, we're sorry, we had a landline internet connection that was good enough for us to be able to work. The conditions of that went downhill in a hurry, and we couldn't even connect to an ADT system.
Why did the conditions go down?
Because they oversubscribed the line, and they didn't maintain it. Now, that is an issue that a Board of Supervisor responsibility should oversee. And we should be saying to people, "Hey, if you want to do business in this county, you need to live up to your commitments, and you need to follow through on the promises that you make." You don't get to profit off the backs of our citizens and provide increasingly worse level of service.
See, I think what I'm getting at is I'm trying to hear from you telling me that foresight needs to be developed. Like that tower, once, if they did add the equipment, it would only reach a thousand feet, so it's basically useless. The current system they're using for emergency services, 911?
Well, that brings up a whole new issue, and that's something that I've tried to address as well.
But these are not good decisions or...
No, they, yeah, and it's not, it's not the Board's... Well, it is the Board of Supervisors' responsibility to sort it out. But I think that you have a problem when the Board of Supervisors thinks they own all the solutions, and they don't rely on the subject matter experts that they have in order to help them prepare a solution that meets a requirement. It should be a simple matter of the Board of Supervisors working towards a strategic goal. The strategic goal is backed by certain outcomes, and those outcomes are met by plans in order to achieve. What we have a little bit too much of is the Board of Supervisors reaching into something that they're not necessarily the subject matter expert on and making a decision that gets us into a situation like we have with the emergency services communication system. Now, that was done a while ago. So you can't lay it entirely at the feet of the current Board. Yeah, but you can't lay it at the feet of the current Board. It happened a while ago. But they bought a legacy system. Now, you know, you buy into any legacy system, you know what the timeline is on. But we also have this infatuation of buying things because we want to own them. Well, when you own them, you own the maintenance as well. There are other ways of getting services that should be explored. And an example of that, a number of years ago, in fact, it was in the aftermath of the Marjorie Stone Douglas issues in Florida. I was asked to provide some consultancy work for the high school and the school system at large. One of the issues that we had was securing the facilities because they couldn't.
Refresh everyone what that is.
The Marjorie Stone Douglas? It was the large school shooting incident that happened in Florida. So as part of that, I took a look at the different school facilities and made certain recommendations as to, you know, "Look, here's the low-hanging fruit that you need to get resolved." One of the issues that came up with that is the camera system was so poor in the school system that you couldn't even identify an individual on a video unless you were looking at the clothing that they were wearing. And that was as a result of people wanting to buy their own equipment so they could own it instead of leasing a service from somebody who would be responsible for upgrading and maintaining that equipment through the lifetime of the contract. And I think those are some of the things that we should be a little bit more careful about how we address them. Now, the emergency services communication system is atrocious. It is dysfunctional at best, and it is unsafe at worst because it really gets to a point where an individual can't enter a structure knowing that he's actually going to be able to communicate with somebody outside of that structure. And that makes it unsafe. And we need to address that as a priority. But in addressing it, we need to make sure that we don't bite off a new problem that costs us another $5 million, and then four years from now, we're sitting there going, "Well, that system is now redundant. What are we going to do next?" So, you know, let's bring in the appropriate subject matter experts and look at this. Now, you know, finances are tough, but you spend money on consultants in order to ensure that your larger expenditure is correctly aligned, and it should be included in that budget.
So isn't this where subcommittees come in, all the committees of the Board?
Yeah, there should be. And that's, you know, one of the issues that I've seen with the solar stuff is I think that the functions and the activities of the various subcommittees have been usurped, and some of their responsibilities have been overlooked. And as an example, if an individual goes in front of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission presents that with, "Here's a set of criteria that you need to meet in order to have your project approved." And the Planning Commission says, "You've met all of the requirements." They approve it, and it goes to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors then vote the project down. How does that work? It doesn't make any sense. If it gets to the Board of Supervisors, it should be looked at, "Well, they met the requirements that we, the Board, set. The Planning Commission reviewed it and approved what they did and said, 'Yes, it's good to go,' and green-lighted it. And why are we now voting it down?"
Are you talking about specific?
That was specifically the solar activities in Nathany District, the last two that went in front of the Board. Now, just ask yourself, if we're operating the way we should, yeah, you have two projects that go in front of the Board that not only met but exceeded the county's requirements, got voted down, and the very next project that came in front of the Board was voted in. It tells you that there's other activities going on, and that is because we're not using the system the way it was supposed to be used.
Yeah, possibly. And I know from my research that Halifax County has one of the most stringent requirements on regulation for solar.
Well, they never used it to be covered. And if you want to see what it used to be, just go to Altam. And you'll see the worst of what it could be.
But speaking of the committees, in the last couple of board meetings, there's not even any committee reports. They're not even meeting. I've asked people on the committees.
Well, and that's a function of the dysfunction of our county administration in the Board of Supervisors, where it is today.
Because there's a committee for everything.
Yes. But there's no point in having a committee if the committee is not going to meet and it's not going to produce a product. And if the committees aren't able to do that, you need to get a new committee, or you need to reassign your resources elsewhere. There is no reason why we should have this paralysis because committees haven't met. I mean, the fact that a young lady stood up at a Board of Supervisors meeting and asked what was happening in the strategic planning committee?
Right, right.
Alarm bells should be ringing. If we don't know where we're going, any road will take us there. And that's unfortunately where I think we are with a lot of issues, is we've lost sight of what our strategic planning objectives should be. Now, if you're dealing with planning and executing any sort of robust plan that has a hope of success, one of the key principles that you're going to do is you're going to have a, you know, key principles of military planning, a selection and maintenance of the A. Figure out what it is that you want to do, and make sure everybody stays on track with it.
And within that committee, shouldn't there be local experts contributing to whatever the project of the committee is?
Yeah, certainly, there should be experts doing it. They don't necessarily have to be local, but we should be mature enough to be able to understand, "I don't know all of the ins and outs." You know, one of my roles in the military was as a signaler on a small team. So I ran an HF radio set. I ran satellite communications. I ran VHF radios. I ran all of the communications for our team, but I can't fix a radio. I know enough to be able to say, "I need to get a radiotech to fix this." Not, it's not now my job to become a radiotech. I need to know enough to be able to say, "Hey, I need somebody with the expertise to do that." And I think sometimes we fail with it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we talked about your district, and let's talk a little bit about the overall priorities of the county. You've mentioned some of it. But let's get to what you think a couple of top priorities are and how you would be a team member approaching or a project manager, or however you want to phrase it, approaching that issue.
Well, I take a very different approach to this. You know, I think that it's very easy for people, particularly in an election cycle, to sit around and talk about, "Well, these are our priorities," or to stand up and say, "I support law enforcement and first responders." But that's great, we all do. Big whoop, as they say in New Zealand. It doesn't mean anything. What does that support actually mean for you? What are you going to do in order to manifest a better outcome on that particular problem? Classic example of that is, "We need better secondary roads." Okay, well, how are you going to fix it? You've got to figure out a way to fix it. Don't just stand there telling me we need something. It's just identifying a problem. Now, there are ways of dealing with all of those. Unfortunately, I think that we have a Board of Supervisors who, for far too long, has thought that their only way of addressing the problems is increasing their revenue with a very myopic approach towards how to increase that revenue. And their approach towards increasing revenue was to continue to tax the citizens of the county more. And they artificially raised property prices in order to increase the further taxes you pay. There's a number of things that they have done over the years, but then we continue to pay more taxes and get less services. Well, there's another way of increasing your taxes, and that's increasing your tax base. For far too long, we have turned a blind eye to the fact that we have a declining population. I've asked that question from day one of arriving in the county. We have all of these major strategic initiatives of rebuilding a courthouse, rebuilding a high school, doing all of these things, but where is the plan to increase our population in order to take advantage of them? I think that that is missing. Now, we have industries that are coming to the area, such as Hitachi, and God bless them for what they do. But now we're sitting there looking at it going, "Well, we need a housing for all of these people. We've got the jobs, now we need the housing." Because if we don't have the housing, having the jobs is not going to help us much because those people are going to leave the county at the end of the day.
But don't you think skills should come?
Well, you have to have skills development, but you need to have the people to develop the skills within them in order to move forward. You know, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg thing. And, you know, some of the stuff that you can run into is, when you talk about skills development, the welding program, for example. Okay, great welding program. Get people certified as welders. How many welding jobs are in the county? Not many. So what are we doing? We're training people to leave.
I think Hitachi is building a training center to...
But that's new.
Help take care of that.
That's new. We're talking, "How do we get to where we are today?"
Well, one conversation I had with someone at Hitachi about all these jobs coming in, and I said, "Where are you going to get the people to take the jobs?" They said, "They're probably going to be coming from other areas."
Yeah, and that's not good for us.
I was going to say, that doesn't help our...
It doesn't help us. And that is the issue that I have with what we're doing in our strategic plan. And we have to make sure that we are encouraging people to move to and put down roots in Halifax County. Because if we don't, then you and I are not going to be able to continue to pay the tax bill that is going to continue to go up as our population goes down. We have to turn that around. Now, that ties into all the other issues that we have. Like, for example, and one of the decisions we made before moving here was, "What is the hospital like?" And the hospital was fantastic. It's not what it was. It's gone downhill since then. Don't disrespect any of the medical personnel. They've always given us wonderful service and looked after us. And, you know, when we've had to have family members lifelighted to Richmond, it's been done. But we don't have a birthing center.
I was going to say...
How do you grow a community if people are looking at, "I'm not going to move there and set up shop, and I'm going to raise my family there if I run the risk of having to give birth to my child in an ambulance on the way somewhere?"
Or if they have to have a C-section.
Yeah.
But that's kind of set in stone. How's that going to change?
It has to be turned around. And it has to be turned around by the Board of Supervisors, making that a priority.
How?
There's plenty of ways that you can add leverage and incentives to industry in order to fill gaps. It's not just a matter of, well, we need to have a conversation with the Centerra people and figure out, "Okay, well, what are the things in your strategic plan that are going to make this thing turn around?" Now, what is the calculus of saying, "Okay, we no longer have enough people in the area to survive with a birthing unit"? Well, then we need to understand what that level is so that we can get enough people in place. We can't just sit there and say, "Well, we can't do it. It's a commercial entity." It's a commercial entity that's operating within our county. And we have to be able to work and communicate with them to figure out, "Okay, well, what do we need to do in order to make this a reality?" Because we just moved from crisis to crisis in the county. You know, "We can't get industry here because we don't have a high school." I've heard that for how many years? Now we've got a high school. Now we can't get industry here because we don't have a birthing center. We can't get industry here because the courthouse needs to be rebuilt. But in the meantime, we're ignoring the glaring issue that is going on. And that is that the only population group that is currently growing in the county is the 55 to 65-year-olds.
Right.
And that's not my statistic.
Right, no, yeah, that's absolutely right. There are jokes about it being retirement community.
Exactly, and we need to stop that.
So what makes it unattractive is lack of medical facilities or full operational use? Lack of housing? We've got jobs and could probably attract more jobs, but workforce development, so it sounds like those might...
Well, and quality of life issues as well. So a lot of these things...
Not much recreation.
There's not a lot of recreational activities around. And a lot of these things, you know, I, it becomes almost like the self-looking ice cream. As you solve one of these problems, all of the others sort themselves out. And I believe that the lowest hanging fruit in that is increase the population base of the county. There is none of those problems that we've discussed and mentioned that don't become easier to solve with more people in the county.
But I'm still trying to figure out the how of that because I've taught high school, and the theme for all of them, I just can't wait to get the hell out of here.
Because there is no opportunity for them here. So you have to create the opportunities, which is why I say it's the self-looking ice cream. You can't look at it and say, "Well, we're just going to, you know, we're going to teach people skills when they leave high school. If they don't have jobs to go to, we're training them to leave." We need to look at this holistically, and we need to look at it and say, "Well, how do we revitalize our downtown areas?" Because quite frankly, at times, it's embarrassing to drive through because there's nothing but shuttered up shops. We have to revitalize those areas. We have to create recreational opportunities for people. We have to have entertainment opportunities for people. You know, right now, if you wanna go watch a movie, what are you gonna do?
I feel like I'm here in Field of Dreams, build it and they will come?
No, I'm very much I am very much not a believer in build it and they will come, because what happens is people think they need to use taxpayers' money. To build the shangri-la that'll solve their problem. My approach is, no, I believe that this should be a private-public cooperation to be able to incentivize. Commercial entities to do the building of the dreams. It's not up to us, the taxpayer, to build everything. We shouldn't be looking at it going, what are all the criteria that somebody wants in order to move to this county? They want housing, they want entertainment, they want this. So we don't go out and build an entertainment center. We don't go out and build a housing community. We don't go. None, that's not the right way to do it. What we should do is we should be welcoming for commercial entities to come and do all of those things. Now, they'll do them for profit.
But my understanding is, haven't there been a couple solar companies that said wanted to build bulk yields and things like that to give?
A a. We I'd I'd like to address that specifically, because there's a couple of areas with that that I think that the county has dug itself into a hole in, and I do not agree with. In fact, let's address it right now, because otherwise I might lose track coming back to it. You know, when 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 the Napoli solar plants, because they're not farms, I'll say that again, they're not a farm, there's no produce coming off there. They're generating electricity. When the Napoli solar plants came online for a discussion. One of the issues with it, and I actually got up and spoke to the board of supervisors, essentially, it was difficult. I said, look, I'm speaking in the opposition sector of this, but I'm not actually opposed to what's going on. I'm not objecting to these two plants. What I'm objecting to is your behavior as the board with regards to how you look at this project. Here are these people interested in investing in the county, coming forward. And they are telling you what it is that they plan to do. You've given them a set of criteria. They've more than met the criteria. In fact, they've exceeded the criteria. And along with that, you have neighboring property owners who are voicing their concerns with the project. And you, the board of supervisors, are sitting there counting up the dollars that they're gonna give you in order for you to approve this project and move forward. Where is the negotiation with the neighboring property owners? If the county wasn't sitting there with their hand open going, give us this money, that discussion should be held with the neighbors.
Don't they have hearings on this?
They have hearings, but the neighbors have no say. They get up and they speak and they it falls on deaf ears. Now, I asked the question, I said, do you think anybody would be complaining about solar? If their neighbor was putting in solar and the solar company said, look, I know this is gonna be a bit of a disruption for your life, but I'm gonna send your first child to college. You think they'd be complaining about it?
Oh, no.
No, they wouldn't. But why is the county inserting itself into this, taking donations, taking money from them to give to this charity, to this charity, to this thing? That should be between the property owner and the neighbors and the solar company. And when it meets the planning commission's. Standards that they put in place, then the board of supervisors should be looking at it as a, hey, this is the final failsafe. We really need to be a shall issue a permit rather than a may issue a permit approach. And unless there's something glaring in there that says the system is broken. The board of supervisors should not be picking winners and losers at the last minute. When they should have been setting the standards, which apparently they did, but they don't hold themselves to, and giving it to the planning commission. It's a broken system.
So it kind of, it this, I'm no expert, and this is my very simplistic thinking, but it sounds like what I'm hearing you say is that. There should be a checklist, everything should be ticked off, and if there's any affect to a neighbor, they should be compensated in some way.
I'm saying that that is an issue that should be resolved in front of the planning commission.
Instead of board?
Yeah, why is the board there taking money out of the steel?
And there is a planning commission.
There, there is a planning commission. Let them get on and do their jobs. You told them what the requirement was. You gave them their matching orders. They went out, they drew up a project in accordance with it, delivered it to you, and you voted it down. Why?
But you're adding the thing about the neighbor.
Well, I'm raising the point that, look, solar is probably one of the most divisive issues in the county at the moment. Now, it's about one percent of our budget. So we're spending all this time fighting over the thing that is one percent. And it's a very divisive issue, and I think that it could be dealt with a whole lot better. If you own land, then solar is a great idea for you. If you neighbor on somebody who owns land and wants solar, then solar is a terrible idea for you. This is the fact of it. But if you have the opportunity for somebody to generate. An activity on their land that provides them with generational wealth, it's their land. Who are we to stand in the way of it? Now, whether you agree with solar or not. I'm not a fan of solar. I think that solar doesn't generate enough power for what it does. I think that solar has had its day. I think that without the government subsidies, it is gonna continue to fade. But who am I to tell you what to do with your land? It's your land. You should be able to do anything with it that you want to, provided it doesn't have a negative impact on your neighbors.
That you're a good neighbor.
And if you've been a good neighbor, and you're able to say to your neighbors, look, hey, I'm putting in an industrial plant and, you know, we're really, we're gonna, we're gonna mess up the road. I'm gonna mess up your view. I'm gonna plant trees that'll eventually cover that, so you won't have to look at all of this, but you'll know that it's out there. And I'm fundamentally changing some part of your life that you moved to the country to enjoy. If I'm a good neighbor, I'm really gonna try and soften the blow for you. And I think by the county inserting themselves into that, instead of softening the blow for the neighbors. We ignore the neighbors and look at what we can do to benefit from it. And that's where it creates such a problem. That's how it's become such a controversy. And I think it needs to be administered a whole lot better.
Another revenue maker people have talked about are data centers, and data centers are pretty. Suction a lot of, you know. Power, water, et cetera, even though I know they do provide them when they come in. Because at one point, there was discussion about having a data center in the county.
Who's that gonna, who's it gonna benefit?
Well, the company who has the data center, obviously.
Yeah, it'll benefit the large property owner who has that.
Well, Mecklenburg County's gotten a lot of benefit out of it.
Yeah, Mecklenburg County has got, and they've stolen half of our tradespeople to go work there. Getting jobs done in this county now is really difficult, because, you know, you need a plumber, an electrician, or anyone. It's it's pretty slim pickings out there.
Well, what kind of big revenue maker, other than solar or data centers, could this county handle? Now, I did have a conversation recently about farming, and the farming is going downhill. You know, so it because a lot of it has to do with tobacco not being the cash crop anymore, because people smoke, et cetera. What could you substitute that with? What are other avenues?
Well, somebody brought up the issue, I think, last week. On the, you know, what were the possibilities of growing hemp? And I'm talking medical marijuana.
That's exactly what we call it.
I'm saying hemp.
Yeah.
Now, hemp is a wonder crop, an absolute wonder crop.
It sure is.
BMW, Porsche, Audi, and Mercedes-Benz have all developed. A dashboard for their vehicles made out of hemp in order to meet their sustainability criteria. That's just one example. You can make milk cabins, you can make material, you can make clothing, you can do all sorts of stuff.
Yes.
Now, the point that I made when somebody raised this, you know, why don't we look at hemp production? I said, yeah, it's a great idea. We should look at hemp production, but what I would rather do is take it one step further. And look at what is the downstream industry that we can help develop to take advantage of the hemp production. Because just producing hemp in the county and shipping it off for somebody else to do the value-added step to it.
Right.
Is a fool's errand, because all that'll do is benefit the landowner. It doesn't benefit everybody else. You'll get a little bit of tax that you'll be able to claw back from them. But it doesn't revitalize a community. It doesn't have business activity. If you have downstream development of. You know, a hemp processing plant that is now producing material. Well, then the next step in it is you have somebody who now takes that material and produces clothing. That's how you grow an economy. And for too long, we've had the idea of, well, other people do the work elsewhere. They don't need to. We can do the work here. Yeah. We don't need to give them the raw material for them to capitalize on.
Have you looked into other counties in rural agriculture of Virginia to see what's been successful for them for our deals?
Well, you know, the the latest one was really the medical marijuana, and it didn't do the wonders that everybody thought it was gonna do. You know, I think there'd certainly be some good returns for some people.
You mean growing it as an agriculture?
Yeah, growing it, and then, you know, we have the the marijuana facility in 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 town that's doing the.
Over on how?
The oil extraction.
Yes, 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 yeah.
But it really hasn't grown into anything that affects anybody else. If I didn't tell people about that, they wouldn't know it was there.
Right. But that but there's also other factors with that.
Yes.
You know, we want what you sell in here.
Yeah.
It's it's different from Colorado, California.
Well, and that's and that's why I say that's perhaps not the best example.
Right, yeah.
You know, what are the restrictions on selling hemp products?
Right. Sure you know, and it was huge in the twenties.
It was huge. It was huge, but hemp was demonized. Hemp was demonized by special interests.
That's right.
Who were looking after after other industrial sectors, and hemp really threatened them.
Right.
Hemp is the biggest threat to the cotton industry than you can imagine. So, you know, very powerful people were able to lobby to squeeze hemp out. Now, you know, I'm I I don't grow tobacco, and I've never grown hemp. But I understand the two are pretty close to each other with regards to what they require from the soil of us. I think this county could be a great hemp producer. And 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 if we did do that, I think that it would provide opportunities for people to regain the utility of their land. But I think it is critically important that whatever we look at, we also look at what we can do for the downstream economic development, so we don't produce raw product. For other people to capitalize.
So how would you open this up as an issue as a board member? Would you provide some type of incentive to farmers around here? Hey, why don't you try this, and we'll help you? Because you just said your own business needs, how can I do business easier? Or how would you do that as a board member?
Well, I think that's something that the board should be looking at, and 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 going out in in outreach to people to figure out, okay, well, who are the experts that we need to talk to? Why don't we have a forum where we get people in to talk about the the, you know, grassroots development of hemp production and downstream industry?
Yes, do they do any forums like that?
Where are they? I don't see any.
I know, right?
So why don't we have that?
Yeah.
And that is something that I would possibly throw onto the IDA as well and say, look, I don't want you, the IDA should not be solely focused. On renting out old buildings. And I'm I'm not saying that's what they do.
Right, right, right.
But some people think that that's what the IDA does. Maybe we can throw it out to the IDA to say, look, what we would also like you to do is help us identify. What are the economic opportunities that we can take advantage of the unique richness of Halifax County? That we need to put in part of our strategic plan so that we can put it in place, so that we develop this along with. And supporting all the other activities you do. So let's have a forum. Let's have people, let's invite people to the county to come and tell us what it takes to set up a hemp manufacturing facility.
That's another one of my questions. You mentioned the IDA. What are some groups that are important for the. Board of Supervisors to have good, healthy relationships with? The IDA would be one.
Yeah, the IDA IDA is one, Chamber of Commerce is one, you know, I think that. I think the communication has been strained between all the various boards and bodies in the county for far too long, and I think that needs to be resolved. I think one way or another, people need to figure it out, and they need to get down to business.
Okay.
Because continuing to bicker amongst each other and fight about, you know, who deserves the credit for what is not helping us move forward.
We talk a lot about transparency. I know live streaming has been approved, but do you have any other ideas? Or have you brainstormed about better communication with constituents? And how to open up the public forum of asking questions without it becoming too cumbersome?
Well, I think our board of supervisors meetings are supposed to do that, and they don't. I think that's a given for everybody. You can go to their meeting and sit there and watch them go through motions and voting, and if you're not reading the minutes, you don't actually know what's going on, because nothing is actually discussed. Now, I think that the board of supervisors meeting is in the wrong format. And I would suggest that they need to conduct their closed session business prior to the board of supervisors meeting. And the first items on the agenda should be feedback on the closed session meeting, so the public is able to comment. Because at the moment, the public comments are really just, you know, you can shout your voice into the ether, and I don't know if it does you any good. So I would change that format. I would suggest that they look at doing their closed session meetings prior to, but when they come back, they owe us feedback on that closed session. We don't need to have the minutes of the closed session, but they owe us feedback. And going through the rigmarole of stating the. The section of the code that allows you to go into a closed session meeting to discuss personnel issues. Yeah, thanks. Stop reading that for me. How about you come back and give me feedback? Because all that is is CYA activity. But you're supposed to be providing feedback to the community, and we've seen none of it. And I think that that needs to be addressed. The other thing that I would like to see happen across the board with the entire board of supervisors is. Instead of just going through an agenda, an agenda item where the chairman of the board says, well, the next on the agenda is project yada, yada, yada. Can I have a motion to approve? And somebody goes, so moved, and now we head to a vote, and we have yeas and nays and abstentions. How about you, as a member of the board of supervisors, state your position on this? How about you explain to us what your thoughts are on this? If you're gonna abstain from something, do us the courtesy of explaining why. You are free to abstain on anything that you want. You are free to vote yes or no on anything that you want. But do us the courtesy of giving us a reason why. Explain to the community why you are doing certain things. And that'll go a long way towards getting the transparency that people are looking for. Because transparency is not just about conducting your business in the open. It's also about providing meaningful feedback. And we have very little meaningful feedback at the moment.
Yeah.
It has to be addressed. No, they don't talk.
So you're saying like, I think X, Y, Z, therefore I'm voting yes. I think X, Y, Z, therefore I'm voting no.
It's that simple. It's that simple. And let's take the last solar thing, for example. The board of supervisor, the 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 member of the board of supervisors that was in his district, and he personally does not believe in solar. He thinks it's a bad idea, so he abstained. I think that's perfectly acceptable. His abstention is based on, look, I, you know, people wanna vote for this thing, but I can't for my personal conscience vote for this thing. That's something he will be answerable to when the next election comes around. But if he doesn't provide that opportunity for people to understand why he's making that decision, how do they make good choices in the future? They need to know what his position is, to state it. When you're voting on an issue, then I wanna hear from you why you think it's appropriate that we're spending public money for a private activity. What is your position on this? How do you see this particular activity? Explain to me where you're at. That's part of that feedback and transparency, and it's lacking. Because all we have is the pomp and ceremony of board of supervisors meetings. We don't actually have the meat on the bones.
What do you think would be a better way to handle the public comment section?
Well, I think the public comment section actually needs to be something that also initiates its own feedback loop. When an individual raises issues, then those issues should be addressed, or they should be resolved. How we do that, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that's something that we can figure out. Now, one of the concerns that was raised with regards to public comment for the live streaming was. Well, the public comments will be out of control. Well, that's an easy one to solve. You turn off the public comments for the live streaming. And anybody who wants to make a public comment does so in person at the meetings. Then you provide a feedback loop for those individuals.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because that was Brian Claiborne's immediate objection to live streaming the meetings, was he said the public comments will get out of control.
But.
Because online comments.
Right, but in person, but you, I mean, you could have a hundred people show up for comments or questions.
That's the nature of the beast.
So, and that that that's what I meant by conversation, it could be hours.
It could be hours, but I can tell you it'll be it'll be resolved fairly quickly. People don't wanna turn up to a board of supervisors meeting and listen to a hundred people make comments if everything is going well.
Absolutely.
When things are going badly, that's when you get people standing there with their pitchforks.
Right, like the last meeting, a lady went up and asked a question, and when she finished, I mean, she almost had tears in her eyes.
Yeah.
And when she finished, they're just like, okay, thanks, next, you know, and I was like, I didn't even acknowledge what she was saying, so there should be some type of interaction.
Loop with that.
Yes.
And it should be a matter of. It's as simple as this. If I stand up in the board of supervisors as a as a citizen of District Six, and I raise an issue. Then I expect my member of the board of supervisors to provide me with direct feedback. He can discuss it with the rest of the board, and he can get back to me and say, hey, you raised an issue. This is what we're dealing with. This is what we're gonna do about it. Because right now, you may as well go shouting to the wind and see what good it does you.
Yeah, well, we then I'll get back to you on that, anything.
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 Otherwise, just save your breath for cooling your pies, because right now it's not doing you any good.
Yeah, I feel really bad for people, because you can tell.
Well, it's heartbreaking.
Well, some of them, it took a lot of courage to get up there.
Look, yeah, not everybody. You know, I I I've been forced into public speaking by virtue of being in the military, being in command positions, doing various things, so. You know, I'm used to being put on the spot and being told, hey, you need to talk about this issue. Go ahead. Not everybody has that ability, and some people are just incredibly shy, and other people have disabilities that don't make it easy for them to do that. So when somebody does take the time and the effort to get up there and speak. Show them the courtesy of giving them the feedback. It has to be done. We've we've gotta stop behaving like the board of supervisors is somehow anointed to a station higher than the rest of us. They're not.
Yeah, I get that. I get that. So if you get on this board, I'm gonna say that when you guys first start up with, because like you said, there's going to definitely be a change. At best, I think it's gonna be contentious. How can you help facilitate that? What people skills do you have or leadership skills have you learned to help? Make the internal communication better and heal some wounds that are very clearly there? make the internal communication better and heal some wounds that are very clearly there?
Uh, well, you know, there's certainly, and, and, look, I've been subject to, I've been subject to a number of personal attacks that quite honestly have created deep offense with me. Uh, and that would be very difficult for me to ignore. But if I'm asked to do a job, then I have to separate myself from those particular issues. And the other thing that I think that I have demonstrated very clearly is even if I disagree with an individual, and I don't agree with the individual's character, what's right is right. And you have to separate yourself from the individual, and you have to weigh up the issue and make a decision. And that decision should not be tainted by your own personal bias. And that's also a symptom of decision-making maturity. Where you can look at a particular issue and say, "I, I don't like this thing." However, the law says this. The policy says this. Regardless of whether I like it or not, I have to make a decision for the public good. And not let my own personal point of view taint that particular issue. Now, you know, one of the individuals who's currently on the Board of Supervisors, who likes making a habit out of attacking me, uh, I defended the individual when somebody else attacked him for his conduct, and his conduct was perfectly fine. Not because I like him, but his conduct was fine. So I will stand up and protect you if you are right. But if you're wrong, I will also call it out as well. And I think that there's a lack of that. I think that the, uh, one of the things that I will certainly be a standard bearer for is, there's no background deals. There's no pre-arranged discussion about something, and then we're just gonna get together, vote, and it's gonna get a rubber stamp on it. Oh, no. There's gonna be a discussion, and you will state your position. I won't move ahead with it.
So what I'm hearing you say then is you're going to be a model of ethics and, um, just be like leaning by example. Do you feel like there's any other outreach that might need, I mean, some, something as simple as team building that might be necessary?
Well, I know, I, I heard that was brought up by somebody who is the worst example of team building. Let me first say this. I don't walk on water. The last person who did got strung up for his trouble, so I, I don't hold myself as being any better than any other man. I like to hold myself to a standard. Uh, and I will certainly do everything that I can to make sure that we are being fair and considerate in our deliberations and our discussions. I don't believe that those issues are fixed by team-building activities. That, uh, no disrespect to the team-building activities, because I've been involved with that my entire professional career. They don't actually fix the underlying issues. The underlying issues that need to be fixed are treat each other with respect. If you treat each other with respect, then all of those issues are very easy to solve. When you treat each other...
But there's ones who people that don't treat with respect.
Well, they need to be kept, they need to be held to, to account for their behavior.
Because conflict resolution is a massive...
Yes. Well, you cannot, you can still have an extreme level of disrespect, but very effective conflict resolution.
How?
Like I said, you have to look at the issue and divorce yourself from your own personal bias.
That's for you, though. What about the other person?
Well, you have to...
See, I'm picturing you walking into this first board meet, or, you know, board meeting, and there's this wall. What are you gonna do? Get out a hammer? No.
But I don't, I don't think that there is a wall. Uh, I think that some individuals have got their own personal bias against me, and I can deal with those. It, it's, look, stick to the facts. I'm not here to discuss your character. I'm here to discuss your actions as a member of the Board of Supervisors, and that's how you get through these issues. You know, focus on the issues, focus on the facts, and then get them resolved. And, and have the, have the maturity to be able to at least understand that even if something fires off all of the flares in your mind, you know, "Danger, Will Robinson. This is not a good issue." If you cannot see it from the other person's perspective, you're in the wrong business.
There's many people in the wrong business.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
But you have to, but you can't, you, you can't look at that and then go, "Well, it's an insurmountable problem." You know, it's, it, this is not Sisyphus climbing the hill. We, we have to continue to pick the rock up and keep moving. We can't look at it and say, "The problem is too big, therefore we don't solve." We have to keep going.
Because we got problems not being solved now.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah, so, so there has to be some...
But a lot of them are not being addressed, because people are not calling them for what they are. And we're tiptoeing around each other and dancing around issues, because, well, how dare somebody say that in public? They'll say it in private. Well, if you're gonna say it in private, you better be prepared to say it in public. That's my position.
Fair enough. Um, wow, we have just gone down so many roads here. Um, okay, let me ask you this one. Um, if you have to rank the, the health of the county on a scale of one to 10, and when I say health, I mean, um, economic development, poverty level, education, medical issues, if you had to give us a ranking of one to 10, what would it be? Where do you think we are right now?
Well, I'd like to preface it first by saying, I, uh, whatever the health report number that I attached to it, um, needs to be weighed against what I think it should be.
Yes, yes, of course.
And, and I honestly believe that this county has a fantastic opportunity. And we could perform well above anybody else in rural Virginia. Uh, we just need to, we, we need to get out of our own way and start improving on things. That said, I would say we'd be lucky to score maybe a three or four, given where we're sitting today. I think that we have jobs that go unfill. We have elements of the workforce that are incapable of filling those jobs. We have a declining medical services area. We have declining school numbers. We have declining volunteerism. You know, there are all of these things that you could look at, and if you're being pessimistic, you could say that it was all very, very bad for the county. We're in a wonderful space right now. We have resources. We have some time. We don't have a lot of time. I think we need to turn this around in the next 10 years. I think the next five years are gonna be critical for making all of that happen. And if we do that, then we will buck the trend for rural community. And I think we will put ourselves in a position that not only secures our future, but secures the future of our grandchildren. And, and I think that what a lot of people miss when they look at what happens in South Central Virginia, we, for some reason, we hit the, uh, we hit the county line to the south of us, and we think the rest of the world doesn't exist. We are so close to Riley Durham that we will continue to get North Carolina influence into the activities that we're doing. I really think the future looks bright for us. I think that we remain a wonderful opportunity for anybody who wants to move to a rural part of the Commonwealth and enjoy what that provides. But we have to be realistic and realize that we don't have a very good health report right now, and we need to do everything that we can to fix it. And we need to fix it quickly. But part of what that takes is us being mature enough to be able to understand that if we're gonna incentivize people to move to this county and put down roots, then we we will, by doing that, we will solve a lot of our other problems, because it gives us more people. It gives us kids in the high school. There's all these activities that happen when you solve that problem. So the poor health report, I think, will be turned around in very short order. I, I honestly think that in the next five years, you can turn that health report around to a six or a seven, and in 10 years, it can be a 10 out of 10.
If there's some changes.
If there are changes, and we have to stop doing business the old way.
Recently, the chairman of the board, Mr. Claiborne, put out a public letter, and he stated that he thought this was probably the best board in the history of Halifax County. Would you care to comment on that?
Well, I have, uh, I've worked in a small-team environment on a number of occasions. And, uh, I, you know, one of the things that you learn to get used to is peer review. And, uh, your peers are gonna be your harshest critics. They will tell you exactly where you failed. And, and it was always an environment that I thought very conducive to developing good leadership, where it didn't matter how junior the member of the team was, they could turn around and criticize the most senior member of the team if they had a failing. I say all of that because it's not very common that a board would turn around and produce their own congressional committee. I think it's a little unusual. I, I can, however, understand that I think that the individual is probably trying to put a positive spin on the activities that they are doing, but it's a little presumptuous. And I think that it is, it falls, it falls flat. You know, really, if you're looking for validation, you should have third-party and external validation. That is the only true validation, because otherwise, I could tell you, you know, I, I, I look myself over, and I'm pretty fantastic. What does it mean?
Okay. Is there anything else you wanna tell any of the voters or anybody in Halifax County? Anything else you'd like to share?
Well, I think that it's a, uh, I, I, I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and I think it's very important for everybody to realize, "Look, this is no time to allow the events to, to pass you by." Everybody should get out and vote. And I don't care if you vote for me or you vote for Monty Thompson. Get out and vote, because you shouldn't be complaining about it if you're not part of the process. Now, I would hope that we have the largest voter turnout that the county has seen for my district in a long time. I really hope so. And, and I will sleep very well at night if I'm not elected, because the vast majority of the county turned up and elected somebody else. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, at least they exercised...
At least they exercised their right to vote, and they got up and they went and did something. Now, I will say, I've seen a very ugly side to our local politics, and I hope to never see that ugly side again. Individuals who have participated in it know who they are, and shame on them. There's no need for it. We could actually have an environment where we share very diverse ideas and then come up with us all being better as a result of it. So I think it's important for everybody to get out and vote. Make your decisions wisely. Go and vote. Let us know what it is that you're looking for. You've heard from me. You've heard from Monty. Listen to the ideas. Separate yourself from all of the noise in the background. Listen to what it is that we're saying, and if you think my ideas are what you wanna get behind, then vote for me. If Monty's ideas are what you wanna get behind, then vote for him.
Now, as far as I know, there's still a third ride-in candidate, Daryl Malone.
Yeah.
So, but I have not been able to get to him.
Uh, I'll give you his number.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I spoke with him yesterday.
Somebody gave me his email, but he didn't respond.
Yeah, Darrell is, I believe he's either a 24, 27-year Navy veteran.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. I'd like to get in touch with him.
Yeah, yeah, Darrell, very nice guy.
But when I was doing research through the election office, I found out that 78% of this county is registered to vote. I was really surprised it was that high.
Yeah.
You know...
Now, I, I've...
That doesn't mean they won't vote.
I've said this before. I would love to be able to be in a system where we helped people to be more more active participants in the voting process. I love the Australian system where
It's compulsory.
if you're a citizen, you have to vote. You don't have to pick someone.
Right.
You can pick the abstain box.
Right.
But you have to vote.
Right.
And maybe that's even something we can look at on, on county taxes and say, "Well, if you voted, you've played your part as a citizen. Maybe there needs to be something that we can do for you." And let's encourage...
You wanna incentivize everything.
Why don't you incentivize everything?
Yeah, that's great.
That we should be doing that. We, we should be looking for what can we do to uplift our community? And, and, and motivate people to be involved. I'm passionate about this county. I will fight for this county. We need to do everything that we can as a county administration to make sure that we provide support for people to do just that, and we need to lift everybody up. A rising tide lifts all boats. And for too long, we've had individuals who've been uplifted, and everybody else has been passed by. So that's really my takeaway from this. I really encourage everybody to stay involved, listen to what your candidates are talking about, decide if their ideas mesh with your ideas, and if they do, get out and vote.